Good evening. To all our distinguished guests, fellow commissioners, friends and family. It is my great honor and pleasure to welcome you all to this significant occasion, the swearing in of our newly elected and re-elected Henry County Commissioners. Today marks not only a milestone in the careers of these dedicated individuals, but also a pivotal moment for our entire community as we continue to strive for progress, unity and growth. As we gather here, I'm reminded of the importance of public service and the profound impact it has on the lives of our residents. Our Commissioners play a crucial role in shaping the future of Henry County, ensuring that our community remains a place where families can thrive, businesses can flourish and every individual feels valued and heard. To our new and re-elected Commissioners, I extend my heartfelt congratulations. Your commitment to serve in our community with integrity, transparency and compassion is truly inspiring. I have no doubt that our diverse perspectives and unwavering dedication will contribute immensely to the betterment of Henry County. As we take our oath today, remember that we carry the hopes and dreams of our residents with us. To our residents, thank you for your trust and support. Your engagement and participation are vital to the success as a community. Together, we will face challenges, seize opportunities and work toward a brighter future for all. In closing, I wish our Commissioners all the best as we embark on this important journey. I want to present each of you all with a personalized challenge coin. This coin represents the values that we hold dear, integrity, service, accountability and a relentless pursuit of collaboration. May it serve as a constant reminder of the high standards we set for ourselves and the responsibilities we bear to our constituents. Let us work together to build a stronger, more prosperous and more equitable Henry County. Thank you.
Well, good evening. I'm going to do the invocation. Let's pray together. Our Father, Lord, we thank you for this privilege tonight. As we're reminded, Lord, not only of the dedication and commitment of those that you've allowed to be placed in office, but, Lord, the fact that you assembled and designed civil government to work for the good and betterment, not only of the society, but each one individually. So, Lord, in this ceremony tonight, I pray you would meet with us that your hand of blessing would be on each and every one, not only in their own districts, Lord, but you'd provide the synergy needed to working together and collaborate to get great things done in this great county. So, we call upon you tonight and we thank you and praise you for what you're going to do in Jesus's name. Amen.
If Chair Harrell's family could come up and join her for her taking of the oath?
Did a little noise at the ground?
We love noises. Do you want somebody to hold the Bible and put your hand? I have two oaths for you here. Do you, Carlotta Harrell, solemnly swear that you will well and truly discharge the duties of Commission Chair for Henry County, Georgia, in all matters which require your official action, to the best of your knowledge and skill, and will you so act as your judgment will be most conducive to the welfare and the best interest of the county? And do you solemnly swear you've been a resident of the county for the time required by the Constitution and the laws of the state? Do you further solemnly swear or affirm that you're not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to the state, any political subdivision or authority thereof, that you're not the holder of any office of trust under the Government of the United States, any other state or any foreign state which you're prohibited from holding by the laws of the state of Georgia, and that you're otherwise qualified to hold this office according to the Constitution of the United States and the laws of Georgia, and that you will support the Constitutions of the United States and of this state? Do you so hope you, God?
I do.
And one more. Do you, Carlotta Harrell, a citizen of Henry County and being an employee of Henry County and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? Do you so hope you, God?
I do.
Congratulations. Thank you.
I just want to say how thankful I am that the citizens and over 100,000 voters in Henry County saw fit to re-elect me to a second term to serve as your Chairwoman. And as we continue to move this county forward and work together, I can't thank my staff enough. You know, my county manager, Sherry Matthews, all of our cluster leaders and directors and all of our staff, you know, just for the hard work that you all do each and every day to make sure that Henry County, that we're providing the services for our constituents. You know, I want to thank the sheriff for what he does to keep criminals off the street and keep us safe. Thank you so much, Sheriff, for being here. And our district attorney, I saw Darius Patillo. And I just want to thank you for, you know, everything that you all do in the court systems in prosecuting criminals to keep our community safe. We want to have a safe Henry County. And I just am so thankful and grateful to be able to serve beside these men and women that I sit on at the dais when we have our meetings. And, you know, I'm just so thankful. And so, I would like to also recognize any other elected officials that are here. If you would please stand. You know, just want to recognize those. I see Judge Board and, oh, Judge Bill. And all our school board members and Pam Nutt and Holly Cobb and Sophie. And then even our newly elected mayor from Locust Grove, Carlos Greer. Thank you all so much for being here. And we are truly a one Henry. We want to work together with our cities to make sure that we are doing the right thing for Henry County and our residents. So, thank you so much. I would like to ask my pastor, Pastor Dr. Terrence Gaddis, to please come forward, say a few words and he will do the benediction for my swearing in. My pastor from Mount Olive Baptist Church.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to say thank you for the opportunity to share in this auspicious occasion with Chairwoman Harrell. I think that she has done a great job for our community and I look forward to her next, this next wave of service that she will render for all of us. Let us have a quick word of prayer. O wise and eternal God, we thank you for what our ears have heard tonight. We thank you for this, your servant, who you have raised up for a season such as this. We pray now that you would bless her and consecrate her in her role and that you would surround her with like-minded people who will work hard to make things better for the citizens of this community. We ask you to touch her and bless her with wisdom, God. Bless her with understanding. Bless her with compassion that she will consider and think about the least and the left behind, that she won't just think about the haves, but she'll also think about the have-nots. We love you and we thank you, what you're going to do in her, through her and for her for all of us. In Jesus's name we pray. Let every believer say amen.
So, because my Commissioner Kevin Lewis decided to sit over here on the side so I couldn't see him, I have a challenge coin, even though he's not getting sworn in. But I do have a challenge coin for all of my Commissioners. And then Judge Shandra Lewis hiding over here with her husband. So, you know, I didn't look to him aside. So, I do apologize for not recognizing them. Our next swearing-in ceremony includes our District One Commissioner Johnny Wilson, if he would come forward and his family.
All right, if you'll raise your right hand. Do you, Johnny R. Wilson, solemnly swear that you will well and truly discharge the duties of Commissioner for Henry County in all matters which require your official action, to the best of your knowledge and skill, to the best of your knowledge and skill, and that you will so act in your judgment that will be the most conducive to the welfare and the best interest of everyone in the county? Do you solemnly swear you've been a resident of the county for the time required by the Constitution and the laws of the state? Do you further solemnly swear or affirm that you're not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to the state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that you're not the holder of any office of trust under the Government of the United States, or any other state, or any foreign state, which you're prohibited from holding by the laws of the State of Georgia, and that you're otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution of the United States and the laws of Georgia, and that you will support the constitutions of the United States and of this state? Do you so hope, you God?
I do.
Do you, Johnny R. Wilson, a citizen of Henry County, and being an employee of Henry County, and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? Do you so hope, you God?
I do.
Judge Powell said, "Are you going to say some words?" I said, "Well, I think I have to." So, I want to thank all the constituents of District One for allowing me to serve them for a third term. And we'll thank all my family and friends, and everyone that come here tonight for all y'all's support. So, thank you.
I've been given the privilege of praying for Commissioner Wilson. I also had the honor of serving as chaplain with the fire service, and Commissioner Wilson and I have a link there, both being former firemen. It's good to be with you tonight. Let's ask God's blessing on Commissioner Wilson. Heavenly Father, once again, we stand before thee. And, Lord, I ask your richest blessings on Johnny Wilson, that you'd fill him, Lord, with your Spirit, that you'd give him that wisdom, knowledge, and understanding necessary in government. Lord, that you would give him the deportment of one of character, that you'd encourage him in the way. And tonight, Lord, I lift up his family, his dear wife that has stood by his side through thick and thin, and through the pressures of leadership, his daughters, his grandchildren. I pray you'd build a hedge around them and give them what they need as they care for him. So, tonight, Lord, I ask your blessing upon him and his leadership, and, Lord, we know if we seek thee first, and your righteousness, that all these things shall be added unto us. So, bless his time in office immensely. Protect him, lead him, guide him, and we'll thank you, Lord, in Jesus' name. Amen.
You know, when I had asked all elected officials to stand, some of them didn't pay me any attention. And so, we're going to try this one more time. Because I missed the Solicitor General, Pam Bettis. I missed our coroner, Donna Cleaver. And my sheriff just didn't even bother to stand. Sheriff Reginald Scandrell. And the DA did. He did. He did his job. He raised his hand. He did his job. But next on our program is District Two Commissioner Neet Robinson, and Judge Raf Bailey will be joining her swearing-in.
If my family can join me, and if you, thank you, family, I need you to join me, please. There should be some more.
Do we have any more?
And my sheriff didn't get up, but he gonna get up. Yes.
The sheriff gonna be called out twice.
All right, if you could raise your right hand. Do you, Neet Robinson, solemnly swear that you will well and truly discharge the duties of Commissioner for Henry County, Georgia, in all matters which may require official action, to the best of your knowledge and skill, and you will so act as your judgment will be the most conducive to the welfare and best interest of the county? And that you have been a resident there for the time required by the Constitution and laws of this state? And do you further solemnly swear or affirm that you are not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to the state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof, that you are not the holder of any office of trust under the Government of the United States, and any other state, or any foreign state, which you are prohibited from holding by the laws of the State of Georgia, and that you are not otherwise qualified to hold said office according to the Constitution of the United States and laws of Georgia, and that you will support the Constitution of the United States and of this state? Do you so hope, you God?
I do.
And do you, Neet Robinson, a citizen of Henry County, being an employee of Henry County, and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do hereby solemnly swear and affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? Do you so hope, you God?
I do.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you. I will say, some people didn't come up, but I see you, and thank you so very much. As you know, it's an honor. I'm grateful to be able to serve the people here in Henry County. And not only that, we represent the county, but also we represent the state of Georgia. People don't realize that what we do here, it affects everybody. So, I just want to say thank you so very much. Thank you to my colleagues. Oh, gosh, God, we are blessed. We all get along, so give a big round of applause for that. We agree to disagree, but guess what? We don't carry it. We don't take it with us. We make sure we do right by the people. And I just want to say to everyone that's standing here, you just know that we've been just three repeat, okay? It took us three times, but we made it, and we're here. So, now we're serving our term, and what we're going to do, we're going to serve it according to his will. And I'm super excited to be able to serve Henry County, and especially my constituents of District Two. I'm always here if I can do anything to my school board members. You know, my regular job is at the school, and I tell you, our kids, they need us. They need us here in Henry County. And guess what? It's going to take all of us to work together, take all of us to work together. And if you notice tonight, our school board stood up, and they're here. Our sheriff and his team, they're here. We have so many, even just our nonprofits are here. And I'm so grateful. We have so many in this community that are willing to give back. And guess what? We're not the only ones that are serving. They are serving as well. And I want to give our nonprofits a big round of applause as well, because we could not do the things that we do without you. So, thank you so very much, Henry County, District Two. I love you guys, and if there's anything I could do, thank you so much, and God bless each and every one of you. And we have Pastor Rita Hardin. She's going to do the benediction for me. So, you guys just get ready, because she got a word.
Glory be to God. Can we just give God praise for what just happened here? And to the ones that sat down, I wanted you to stay, because I need some agreement behind me. Amen? Bible says whenever two or more come into agreement as touching anything, that God will do it, and we need God to do some things. Am I right about it? Listen, I'm not ashamed to say his name, and I just want to just do the, where'd you go? Hey there. Praise God, because he has done great things. Just want to pray the prayer and do the benediction. And the songwriter said, and the word says, that the race is not given to the swift, nor to the strong, but the one that can endure until the end. And she's endured midterm, part-term, half-term, full-term, and ran many races, but she stands here today, and I'm excited that the anointed has stepped into the appointed. Amen? And I just thank God for choosing her, and so we just want to go before the Lord in prayer. Father, in the mighty name that is above all names, Lord God, we thank you, Lord God, that what you have for us, it is for us. Father God, I thank you that you've called her and commissioned her. Father God, you anointed and appointed her before she was yet even formed in her mother's womb. Thank her for agreeing with you, Lord God, and stepping out and stepping beyond what her eyes could not see and her ears did not hear. Lord God, I pray over her. I pray that you will strengthen her in all manner of might. I pray that you will give her insight, creativity, Lord God. I pray that District Two is a district of exclusiveness and inclusiveness, in the name of Jesus. I pray that she will cover her people, Lord God, as a mother covers her birds, in the name of Jesus. Father God, I pray, Lord God, that there will be such an anointing that rises up in District Two, that the light will shine upon it, not only District Two, but this entire county. Father God, in the name of Jesus, you have chosen, Lord God, you have spoken, Lord God, and we thank you that she leans on you, because you will do what no other power can do. I pray that the light will shine in darkness, Lord God, in this place, Lord God, that you will cover her and you will keep her. Your word says that you are able to present us faultless before your throne, Father God, and we should approve all things honorable and with integrity in the sight of God and in the sight of man. I know that this will happen, so we agree with you. We not mad at you. We rejoice in you. We're excited about what you've done, and what you've done, and what you're going to do through this vessel. And so, I say, "Now unto him." Y'all say, "Now unto him." Somebody say, "Now unto him." Now unto him who is able to keep her from falling and present her faultless before his throne of grace. Be glory and majesty, dominion and power, both now and forever." And all that agrees, say, "Amen." Amen.
Hey, Fred, I'm glad you could make it. Just thought I'd call you out. You know, Commissioner Robinson talked about the support that we have from our school board members here, and, you know, K through 12 is so important that we support our schools, our teachers, and our students. And I would just like to ask the school board members to just stand for me one more time, because I got a purpose for this. I want to also recognize their other partner in education, and that's Dr. Erwin Clark over at Southern Crescent Technical College. And, Dr. Clark, I want you to stand. And it is these individuals that work together in collaboration to make sure that our students are getting technical training, that those that want to go to college are going to college. And so, we need to make sure that we are supporting these institutions. And so, I just wanted you all to know that they're here tonight, standing with us, but we want you to know that we will continue to stand with you for our children. Thank you so much. And, you know, there were commissioners that laid the groundwork for us prior to us being able to serve in these roles. And one person that I truly admire and have a lot of respect for, and can call upon to get advice, is the former Commissioner Warren Holder. And he is our Chairman of the Henry County Water Authority. Warren, I just want to recognize you tonight, and thank you so much for laying the groundwork for so many of us to be in this position. Our next commissioner, oh, Lord. District Four Commissioner Michael Price. Oh, praise God. And I know my county manager gonna kill me, but, you know, God worked things out for you. He really does. He worked things out, and he worked this out for us, so that we can continue to work together productively as a board, and that's what is important. And so, he will have his swearing-in, if we have him, and the Honorable Kelly Powell to please come forward to do his swearing-in, and any of his friends and family members that are here, please come forward and stand with him. I know his beautiful wife, Ms. Sheila, is here, and so, all of his family and friends, please come forward and stand with him.
I think he's going to summon a few people who aren't coming.
Dana Lemon, one of my other distant cousins, if you could come as well. I don't see you, but... Oh, there she is.
Dana Lemon, come on.
Thank you for owning me today.
Do you raise your right hand? Do you, Michael Price, solemnly swear or affirm that you will well and truly discharge the duties of Commissioner for Henry County, Georgia, in all matters which require your official action, to the best of your knowledge and skill, and that you will so act as in your judgment to be the most conducive to the welfare and the best interest of the county? Do you also solemnly swear or affirm that you've been a resident for the time required by the Constitution and the laws of the state? Do you further solemnly swear or affirm that you're not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money due to the state, or any political subdivision or authority thereof, and that you're not the holder of any office of trust under the Government of the United States, any other state, or any foreign state, which you're prohibited from holding by the laws of the State of Georgia, and that you're otherwise qualified to hold this office according to the Constitution of the United States and the laws of Georgia, and that you will support the constitutions of the United States and of this state? Do you so hope, you God?
Yes, I do.
And do you also, Michael Price, a citizen of Henry County, and being an employee of Henry County, and the recipient of public funds for services rendered as such employee, do you hereby solemnly swear or affirm that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of Georgia? Do you so hope, you God?
Yes, I do.
Yes, I do.
All right, congratulations.
Let me say thank you to each of you who are here tonight, and most especially to my wife. Thank her for the sacrifices that she's made in all of my endeavors. I also want to thank God for my mom, who's with, was tonight, and my sisters, my aunts, uncle, cousins, and to each of you from District 4. Without you, this could not have been possible. And so I just want to thank you for your faith and entrusting in me to being your representative and servant. It gives me an absolute honor to be able to serve the county of my birth. I'm the fifth-generation Henry Countyan, and so just to be able to be in this position, I'm honored, and I thank God for this opportunity. I look out among you, and I see that I'm joining some other people that's from the great class of 88 here in Henry County High. Donald Cleveland, amen, is our classmate. Holly Carter Cobb, amen, is our classmate. Mr. Holder's daughter, Tammy, was our classmate. And so, just to be connected to other great people who've served this county, and I'm excited again to be able to serve. Chair Harrell, you're not the only one that reaches out to Mr. Holder. When I got this appointment, he was one of the first people that I went to see, and he shared some invaluable information with me and to me. And so I'm just grateful again to be able to serve Henry County. It is one of the greatest counties on this side of heaven. We should clap a little louder than that. It's one of the greatest counties on this side of heaven, and I'm just grateful again to be a part of the service that will be given. And to, again, all the school board members, thank you all just for helping to educate me when I was in school, as well as my children, and those who are yet coming on. And so I just continue to solicit your prayers in this walk and in this endeavor, that God will continue to lead and guide us in the way that he would have us to go, that we would not do the things that we desire, but that we would do the things that he desires. For his word declares that we ought to let our light shine before men, that they may see our good works and glorify him. And so it is our plan. And Donna, I'm sorry, Donna Holder, amen, also, she was Donna Davis, amen, in 88, so we're glad to have you also. But again, just continue to walk in a way that is pleasing in the sight of God. I am a pastor, but I'm, I will not be praying for myself today. I'm gonna ask my good friend Pastor Gaddis if he would come and lead us tonight in prayer, again, for this walk and in this endeavor. Can I just do this real quick? There are some other people that have been instrumental, if you will, in Henry County, those who are native here, like Brother Barry Harkness, Councilman Rufus Stewart, who's my mama's classmate, amen. And he grew up on Washington. I grew up on Carver, and so we've always been Brother Larry Harkness and Larry Head. We're so grateful to see you all here tonight in this momentous occasion. Again, thank you so very much.
This is why you gotta always be ready. Let us pray. Father, once again, we come before you as humbly as we know how, thanking you for this, your servant. You have given him many titles: husband, father, friend, pastor, preacher. And now you have so fit to once again bestow a new title upon him, Commissioner. And so we pray, God, that you use him for your glory. Your word says that eyes have not seen, ears have not heard, nor have entered into the hearts of man, the things that you are preparing for those who love you. And we know that Pastor Price, Commissioner Price, loves you. And so we thank you for all of the ways you're preparing him even now to do great things for these, your people, in this community, at this time, and at this place. We love you, God, and we thank you for him, and we look forward, once again, to the great things that you're gonna do through him for us. We praise you, and we give you the glory. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
So as we close out, we do have refreshments. The refreshments are out in the lobby area, so please make sure that you stop by, because we have a lot of refreshments. And so, we need for you all to, please fix your plate. You know, when I took, when I was first elected in 2020, and I took office in 2021, I was blessed and fortunate at that particular time to, where my husband stood with me when I was sworn in. Shortly after being in office, just a few months, he passed away. And so, you know, this journey sometimes can be difficult. And so, what I would like for people to keep in mind is that, you know, it's okay to disagree with me when it comes to policy, but please don't attack my family in the midst of it. And so, and I ask that for all of the commissioners, you know, you can agree with all of us, disagree with all of us on any vote or any policy, but leave our families out of this, because they don't deserve to be attacked. And so, I'm just saying this because the last four years, many of us as elected officials here in Henry County have been through a lot. A lot of attacks, a lot of threats on our life, and we're just here to serve our community, the community that we love. I would be remiss if I did not recognize my parents who are here who were a little tardy coming in. But I forgive them because they drove all the way from Eaton, Georgia, to get here. And I would, Mom, can you stand? Can you get up and, and stand up? And then, and then, that's my dad, Bishop William. See, I am a preacher kid. And so I am happy to have them here with me tonight. My daughter was here with two of my six grandsons, and, but I think that in order for us to carry out this program, they had to leave. And so, but I thank them for being here as well. And I just want to thank each and every one of you all for taking time out of your busy schedules to come out, to join each of us as we are, were sworn in, to continue to serve Henry County. And so thank you, may God bless you, and please, safe travel home.
Thank you, Chair. If we could get all of our commissioners to the front for some photos first, and then families, welcome to join for pictures as well.